My name is Melissa Bordelon and I serve as the President and CEO of the Greater Hammond Chamber, and we're so glad that you're here with us today. Again, that little bit of housekeeping, please keep that mute button on until it's your turn, and then use that chat box in the bottom to communicate any questions you may have. We want to start off by making sure we recognize our elected officials who are here with us today. Of course, our five guests, Senator Patrick McMath, Senator Beth Mizell, Representative Laurie Freeman, Representative Nicholas Muscarella Jr., and Representative Bill Wheat. And then we'd also like to draw attention to the fact that our Tangbo Parish President, Robbie Miller, is with us, City of Hammond Mayor Pete Panapinto, and also Hammond City Council President Carly White Gonzalez, thank you so much for being with us, representing the Louisiana Public Service Commissioner Eric Scrimetta, our friend Donna Dardar, and representing City of Ponte Tule Mayor Bob Zabia, Executive Assistant Rhonda Sheridan. Have I missed any officials? Please speak up and let me apologize to you if I have. No, I think we're good. I'd also like to recognize Southeastern Louisiana University President Dr. John Crane. Thank you for being with us, Dr. Crane. And Dr. Crane, you don't know this, but you also have one of your Southeastern classes on with us today. Dr. Amber Nero is teaching a social media class right now, and she has about 18 students who are joining us to listen in. So we want to say to those Southeastern students, we are so glad you are back on campus, we are so glad that you're here in Hammond and lying up. I'd like to invite Michelle Biggs, who is our Governmental Affairs Chairman, to share a few words with us. Michelle?
Thank you, Melissa. Welcome, everyone. I just wanted to say hello. Again, my name's Michelle Biggs. I'm the Executive Director of Alumni Relations at Southeastern. And on behalf of the Hammond Chambers Governmental Affairs Committee, I want to welcome everybody and thank you so much for joining us on this call. If you're on this call, obviously you are interested in public policy, and so we wanted to invite you to join the committee. We always have some great conversations about issues that affect our local businesses in the area. We typically meet the first Thursday of the month at 8:00 a.m., and next week, our meeting will actually be here at the Alumni Center on Southeastern's campus. So if you are interested in joining us, I urge you to reach out to Melissa or Seth, make sure you get on that list so you'll get notifications, and I hope you'll be able to join us.
Thank you, Michelle. Just again, a reminder of how we're going to do this so that we make sure we get great information on the special session starting on Monday. Each of our guests is going to share roughly five minutes. We're not holding you to the stopwatch, but roughly about five minutes, and they know that they're going to share the things that are most important to them heading into this session, what they want us to know about. And then when we finish going through each of the five, we're going to have some time for question and answer. And again, please use that chat box in the bottom to share that information. If you're one of our friends on a cell phone and you need to text a question to me, I believe most people on here have my cell phone number, but it is (985) 237-2157. So how about we get started with Senator Patrick McMath?
Thank you, Melissa. It's good to be with you guys today. A week ago, I was not anticipating, actually, no, a week ago today is when I think we all sort of started to realize that we were going to be heading into a special session starting on Monday. I had actually just planned a trip, not expecting to be in special session, and had to cancel, but that's all right. I mean, quite honestly, we are at our best and our most productive, we being the legislature, when we're in session. So we are facing, as we all know, a number of crises, quite frankly, in the state right now, between COVID, the economic shutdown, Hurricane Laura, and everything in between that has really developed over the past year. We've got a lot of work to do. And while, you know, I would have loved to have been in South Dakota pheasant hunting, I'm excited to be up in Baton Rouge with my colleagues in the Senate and in the House to get back to work and to really shore up and see if we can't address, you know, some of the things that have really been plaguing us over the past several months. So my priorities, I know that just about everybody on this meeting, Larry and Beth and Nikki and Bill, among others, have, for the most part, been over to Lake Charles and Cameron Parish and seen the devastation that Hurricane Laura wrecked on our southwestern family members. And that's going to be one of the areas that I look to, maybe not author a bill, but certainly support those that are authored by the representatives of that part of the state. I think it's important. The devastation is massive, and they're going to need a lot of help and a lot of support. And I look forward to providing that. Shoring up the unemployment fund is also going to be a huge priority, I think, for all of us. That's scary right there, and I look forward to learning more information about it and figuring out ways where we can avoid a 60% tax increase on our businesses. I don't think it's fair for our businesses to have to bear that burden when, quite frankly, it wasn't really up to them to shut down in the first place. So this is something that we really need to tackle as we begin the reopening and the recovery phase of our economy right now. So that's something I look forward to digging into. And revisiting the Main Street Recovery Program, you know, that was one of the programs, one of the many programs that came out of, I guess it was the special session. It's all a lot of a blur at this point, but, and we put in a significant amount of state dollars that came from the Kansas Act funding into that program. It's well-intentioned, and I wish more people, more businesses would be taking advantage of that. But I also don't view it as a terrible thing that, you know, we've still got a bunch of money in that pot left over, and as all of us in Baton Rouge have come to realize, there's a bunch of buckets of money, and some of it can be used for one thing and some of it can be used for another. And when there's money left over, like what I'm anticipating there will be in Main Street Recovery, to the tune of in excess of, I think, of over $100 million still, there's a lot of other programs out there that really need our help that haven't received state funding. ARC of Louisiana in particular, in fact, I just got off of a phone call, a Zoom call with members of the ARC community, and for those of you who don't know, it deals with supporting and assisting adults with disabilities. We oftentimes think of children and supporting those, but, you know, they grow up and they need help just as much as they did when they were kids. And unfortunately, there are 22 chapters of ARC in Louisiana, one of which is already closed, three of which are on the verge of closing because they've been shut down and they haven't received the federal funding that they thought they were going to be receiving. And so I know that a few of us have prioritized this to see if we can't take some dollars that are going to be left over in some of these programs that were set up through a COVID response and apply those to the ARC program. I think it's vital that we do that to ensure that those programs, you know, get over this hump that we're in. And then finally, I think, you know, the elephant in the room here is going to be addressing the emergency orders and the governor's ability to extend those. You know, personally, I don't think our law takes into account, you know, an extended indefinite emergency health crisis like we've seen with this pandemic. I think, you know, a governor should have the authority and the power to declare a state of emergency. Typically designed for, in my opinion, it's designed for hurricanes and floods and natural disasters, and doesn't take into account, like I said earlier, you know, a global pandemic with an indefinite timeline. And I think it is important for the legislature to have a seat at the table. When it comes to these extensions, you know, we've been under an emergency health crisis for, I guess, since March now, and it's taken a significant toll on all of us and our businesses and the livelihoods of all Louisiana residents. And I think it is reasonable and it is fair to want to have some checks and balances in that process and to have the legislature have a seat at the table. So that's going to be, I think you're going to see a lot of chatter about that, and rightfully so, and I look forward to, you know, playing my role where I can. And again, I think it's a broad call, there's 70-some items, and it's going to be an interesting 30 days, but I'm excited to get up there, and I know that everybody else, you know, on this call is as well. So thank you again, Melissa, for having me. I love Tangbohua and be happy to answer any questions if you guys have when the time's right. Thank you again.
Thank you, Senator McMath. We will go to Senator Mizell now. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you, Melissa. I just wanted to ask Patrick if the pheasants had a lobby, which is why we had this earlier special session. Yeah, thank you. Also, I think that we were all a little taken aback by the special, I think we thought maybe middle of October, and then really I thought there was going to be none, but here we are. And, you know, there are 70 items on the call. Some of us, I think, are trying to make as much out of it as we can because a lot of bills were withheld from last session because of the COVID and the lack of public involvement, and some committees didn't meet. So, you know, I've got some bills that I'm looking at whether they fit into the call in some shape or form, but primarily what I'm excited about is an opportunity to keep pushing broadband a little further in our direction for rural Louisiana. And, you know, I'm glad Dr. Crane's on the call because I know, you know, they have such a large rural student population that deals with that, that it makes it really hard for them. So that's what we're working on today, a meeting with some people. I'm at the Capitol today, meeting with some people on what we're looking at is creating an office of broadband within the state and looking at some possible incentives to drive deployment. Where, you know, the co-ops can at any time install broadband, but there's been some lack of movement from that direction, I think, for a lot of reasons. But the federal money, you know, there is federal money being made available, and I'm hoping there'll be more federal money being made available to get it moving in our rural areas. So that's a huge economic growth issue. I mean, there's layers upon layers of why we need it. Someone this morning said it's the electrification of the 1920s and '30s. It's, you know, it's equal to that. So a lot of the growth of our economic growth and prosperity of our state is linked to that. But another thing, I thought Senator McMath made a great point when he was talking about ARC and the resource that ARC is. I was in a meeting this morning with Safe Haven, funding with Safe Haven, and I think more and more wise use of those resources is making it a regional component, you know, like Florida Parish's Human Services, you know, Safe Haven's going to be there for St. Tammany, Tangi, and Washington, and really making the most out of the funding resources we have. And instead of each trying to be in isolation from one another, we can, you know, we can do better together than we can apart. And I think that's a real opportunity. And picking up with Patrick's comment, yes, we all want the money left over for Main Street Recovery. I think there are dibs being put out in every direction, you know. That's an opportunity. Thankfully, you know, we appear to have a surplus instead of a deficit, which is a different session for a lot of us. You know, we mostly have dealt with trying to cover a deficit, so I'm sure all hands will be out when we know we've got a surplus and will be wanting to take advantage of that. There will be, I think, a tremendous amount of eyes on the response we're giving to Southwest Louisiana. I spoke to a senator from out there just a little while ago, and I think he's a very thoughtful gentleman, and I think he has decided that his response may wait till next session because it would be a little too heated for right now, which I think is wise. And I think a lot of us, a lot of our emotional reactions to situations where we're in are going to benefit from giving it some deliberation and when we can do it in a less emotional way. So that's mainly what I've got. I appreciate the opportunity, Melinda, I'm sorry, Melissa, got my mind on something else. But any options that you all have with concerns, I'd love to hear about it. You know, I appreciate Robbie being on the call, and Dr. Crane, and all of you, because I think that's, like Robbie says, the greatest parish and the greatest state because you all do engage so well and you do it in a united way. And that's a huge step in why you've seen the growth you have over there. But please reach out to me for anything whatsoever.
Thank you, Senator Mizell. Representative Freeman? Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Appreciate it. Thank you for having me today. I'd like to say a special shout out to Dr. Crane and the Southeastern students, my alma mater, glad you all are able to be here today. My focus for this special session is going to be two-pronged. Mainly, my main focus is to try to end this mask mandate and some of these onerous restrictions on our businesses. We need to get our businesses back open, all of our businesses back open, including bars, including everything. I don't think there's any business that should be shut down. I think it's bad for our economy, it's bad for our citizens, of course, it's bad for the businesses, and it is just hurting people unnecessarily. So in my opinion, and I've looked at all the potential opportunities to do this, and I think the only way we can make an immediate impact on that is utilizing the statute that allows us to override the governor's emergency order. And that's through some type of petition. There is a petition out there right now by Representative Bakala that I think is something that it is not as onerous and it's not as severe as the original Sebal petition. I've committed to sign that petition. I will be signing that petition on Monday, and I'm hoping at some point we can get the 53 signatures to end this madness that's going on with our businesses. That's got to stop. Now, and I said two-pronged test, that's an immediate, that's the only thing that I know of that we can have an immediate impact. The second prong of my attack is going to be long-term. How do we solve this problem long-term and prevent this from happening again? I'm working on a bill right now, it's in draft form, to amend the emergency statutes that gives more oversight and actually more ability of the legislature to have an effect on the governor's emergency declarations. And what I mean by that is, as the current law is written, we as a legislature can only overturn the emergency order or the public health disaster. That has caused some heartburn for some of my colleagues who have been reluctant to do that, and I understand that. I do understand what their concerns are. So what I want to do, and I want to change that law to allow us to be able to either overturn the entire disaster declaration or go in and rescind subparts, parts or subparts of it. So in other words, rather than having to use an axe to cut it all out, we can use a scalpel and go in and cut out the pieces that the legislature believes are unnecessary. I think if we change that law to allow us to do that, I think the legislature will be more willing to utilize a petition like that because we would not be rescinding an emergency order, which has all its implications and unintended consequences, but we can go in and surgically remove certain restrictions or subparts of it that we think as a legislature are unnecessary. So that's one of the bills that I'm actually working on as we speak, to amend that emergency declaration statute to do that. The second bill that I'm working on right now, in the event that we are able to potentially override or rescind the emergency order, I'm amending Act 9 to ensure that the immunity protections are going to still be available for the schools. And I believe the way to do that is to remove any ties to the BESI requirements or other things like that. So we're going to take out parts of that statute that would potentially cause a problem for Act 9 immunity for the schools. So those are the two major bills that I'm working on right now that address this COVID problem. The third thing that I am extremely passionate about is the Unemployment Trust Fund. I think it would be an absolute travesty to make businesses have to pay to refund this trust fund. The governor shut businesses down, the businesses didn't want to be shut down. So the governor creates the problem and then wants to tax the businesses to pay for the problem he created. I think that's unfair. Now, I'm not going to tell you I have all the answers of where the money's going to come from, but I do know it should not be coming from businesses. The businesses didn't ask for this, the businesses are already hurting, businesses are operating at ridiculous reduced capacities at this point in time. So to ask businesses to pay this premium is beyond what I'm willing to do. So that's another issue that I'm going to be working on. Also, one thing that was near and dear to my heart that I was able to work on, and we did have some successes with, is reinstituting Friday Night Football for the high schools. I was real pleased with the efforts of all of the legislators and all that were involved in that, and we were able to reinstitute Friday Night Football. Well, that's all fine and dandy, but now we're limited to a 25% stadium capacity. That's actually, I think, also for colleges, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Crane. So that 25% capacity restriction makes absolutely no sense to me, when you can have 25% capacity in an open-air stadium and 75% capacity in a restaurant that's closed where people are sitting around with no masks on at all. I don't understand the reasoning behind that, and I'm hoping to attend the Education Committee hearing this week so I could ask these questions to LDH and others to find out what is the scientific data they're relying on to impose a 25% restriction in an open-air stadium versus 75% restrictions in a closed restaurant. And I've asked, in fact, I'll tell you this, two weeks ago, I sent emails to Dr. Courtney Phillips, who is the head of LDH, and two of Governor Edwards's folks, asking them to provide me with the studies and the scientific data that supports that, as well as stopping the sale of alcohol at 10 o'clock at night and no sale of alcohol at an athletic event. Well, two weeks later, we're sitting here and all I heard was crickets. I've got no data, I've got no scientific studies, I've got nothing sent to me. Probably, I would probably assume, because they don't have any. But I'm going to ask that question hopefully this week and see if there is any, and try to get them to explain to me this ridiculous restriction. So those are the things that I'm going to be focused on, of course, and working with others on other issues. I know we have a 70-item call, so it's going to be pretty broad, but those are the areas that I'm really focused on because I think those are the areas that my folks in my district are really concerned about, and that's what I've been hearing the most from, and that's where I'm going to focus my efforts. So again, Melissa, thank you so much for having me, and I'm going to answer questions when appropriate.
Thank you very much. Representative Muscarella, thank you.
Thank you. I think what we've all can agree upon is that the pandemic has brought a lot of stress to our businesses. I think you see that in the divisiveness, and, you know, people are digging in. When you're trying to protect your livelihood, it's important to them to do that, and, you know, we see that day-to-day. I'm kind of glad that we're going into the session because I think it's an opportunity for all of us to sit in a room and try and solve some problems, you know. Initially, when I heard about the call, I didn't know how I felt because I felt like it might have been a little too soon. But, you know, as time went on and I started to look back, we haven't had an opportunity to really solve these problems. So getting in that room, getting in that chamber, getting 144 people together and making a decision on how we can move the state forward, I think it's important. I'm really looking forward to getting there and getting some good ideas. Now, when you get in that room, it's hard to herd cats, and you've got 144 people with 144 different ideas, and you've got to try and make all those ideas come together for the benefit of the state. Now, I think my goal in going to the session is to open up the economy, period, full stop. We've got to limit some of these restrictions. I mean, it's too eroding on the rights of our citizens, so we need to allow them to open their businesses up, we need to allow them to make money, provide for their families. The Unemployment Trust Fund, I wholeheartedly against raising any taxes to fund that. It's something that we can't do as a state. During the last session, we funded the Main Street program. I don't think it was as successful as we wanted it to be. And as I look back, if I could probably tweak a vote, I would probably tweak that vote because I would have wanted to provide more money towards the Unemployment Trust Fund because I don't want to punish businesses. I know a lot of people in small businesses that are struggling, and then now we're going to do this and add more stress to their pocketbook. I just don't think it's the right way to do business. I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that we don't, as a legislature, harm our businesses any more than they've been hurt already. Now, some businesses during this pandemic have come out on the winning side of this, and some have been on the losing side. So we've got to make sure that we protect the ones that are struggling and make them be made whole. As far as the call, I've read it, it's 70 items, it's very vague. I think that leadership did that to make sure we cover all bases. You know, I can tell you that looking at some of the calls, you can tell that a majority of them are to try and limit the restrictions, which I think will happen. I've had my staff look at all the southern states, all the restrictions, to see why are we different? How are we different than Texas? How are we different than Florida? And then I'm going to take that knowledge that I've come up with, and I'm going to present it to my colleagues. I think you'll see that we will all get behind the idea of we need to loosen up a little bit and let it open up a little bit more than it is. I don't think we're that far behind other states, but I think if we're one step behind them, we're one step too far behind. So we've got to be at least leading that charge or at least level with our neighboring states, and I think when we do that, you will see an economic recovery that's important to all of us. And, you know, I eat at restaurants, I go out in the public. I think people want to open the state up. What we failed to do, I think, is realize that we have smart people in our state that know what to do, they know how to protect themselves. People know, restaurants know that if they want to make money... and they want you to dine in their restaurant, they're going to protect you as their person in the restaurant. So restaurants are smart. Business people are smart. You know, I went to Albertson's the other day. They had the hand sanitizer. They had people cleaning the carts. People are going to do what's right to make their business successful. If they don't, then they won't succeed and people won't eat there. We've got to give our, you know, the people of Louisiana, the benefit of the doubt and say, they know what they're doing. They can protect themselves. And if, look, if you're susceptible to getting sick, then you're going to stay home. So I really think that as a body, we will come out with some good legislation. I hope we do. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we've got to get a bill passed and we've got to get it to where the governor doesn't over veto it. So we'll see what the body does. But I want to thank y'all for allowing me to speak today, and I look forward to the questions.
Thank you, Representative Muscarella. Representative Wheat?
Well, thank you very much, Melissa and Michelle, for putting this together. And thanks to Greater Hammond Chamber. Look, if I'm slurring a little bit, I went to the dentist this morning and the whole left side of my face is still feeling numb from that. So if I'm slurring a little bit, apologize for that. But look, you know, before I get into this session, I want to talk about two things there that are very important. Melissa, you know that we're in the last run for the census, getting our people in Louisiana counted, and we're in the last week of that self-reporting. So if any of us on this call has the opportunity to reach out to individuals that have not signed up for the census count, please make those last-minute reach-outs and make sure that we get our numbers in there. I can't stress as to how important that is from a budget standpoint of how we fix things in our state and in our local governments to have those numbers counted appropriately. The second thing is coming up with the election that's coming up soon. There's going to be, I think, seven constitutional amendments on the ballot that will be for folks to discern and decide which direction they're going to go in. And some of them are very important. There's a broad array of those. I know we'll be going within the community in the next few weeks to try to educate folks about those constitutional amendments and how we can make that decision that's appropriate for us. So pay attention to those two things coming up. On the session itself, I will tell you, my session starts in the morning. In fact, I've got a joint Medicaid Oversight Committee meeting starting at 9:00. One of the issues that has been brought up by several of the representatives, the beauty of going last, by the way, is that a lot of things have already been talked about and you've been educated on already. But in that meeting tomorrow morning, we will be discussing several important topics, one of which is going to be the start of how do we address the inequities of how the monies have been shared from the CARES Act concerning how the folks from our disabled communities, the organizations such as ORC and OPTIONS, and that all serve in a very important capacity. And we need to shore up those individuals that are taking care of our disabled and our handicapped to make sure that they are able to do what they do importantly for us in the state. So that discussion, for me, will start in the morning. Before session starts, also, on Monday afternoon, we start at 6:00 with the session, but at 1:00, I'll be going into a joint budget committee meeting. And I guess for me, this entire session, I will have my eye always on where the dollars are coming from because we can't do much as a state if we don't have the right dollars in the right places. And so making sure that the dollars that we have available to us in our state is used appropriate proportion to the need that is out there. And I will tell you, there's a lot of needs as a result of the coronavirus that attacked our state. So our budget situation over the next couple of years is going to be quite fragile. And we're going to have to be very ingenuous. We were helped this past year, this past session, because we had the opportunity to get some federal dollars in to plug some holes for us. We were hoping that this session that we're going into, we would be discussing more budgetary items and the federal government would have already decided if there's a next round of stimulus that was coming down and how we were going to be able to use that to put forward. Unfortunately, that's not happened. And so if we can't count on that, we're going to have to figure it out ourselves on the state level. And that's what I'll be doing in those committees, is ask the important questions about where the money's coming from and where we most appropriate need to spend that money. We've already talked about the Workers' Employment Security Fund, and I can't tell you how important that is. You know, the way that works is, Melissa, is that when that fund reaches a critical level, we have no choice. We cannot let it go bankrupt. Federal law dictates to us that we have to borrow money to put into that fund to make sure that the payouts are there. And so that money that we borrow, we will be on a very short period of time where there's no interest that's going to be charged on that money. But at some point, interest will be charged and we will be paying back not only what we borrowed, but the interest rates on that. And so we're going to have to figure that thing out. Where the money's going to come from, I can't tell you just yet, but we're going to figure it out. And unlike Larry, I think it would be grossly unfair for us to be able to reach out to our business community and say, "Oh, by the way, you're the ones that need to pay for everything that happened up to this point to make sure that fund gets put back in order." We need to be smarter than that from our business standpoint. Hurricane relief is going to be a big topic. You know, a lot of part of our state, from top to bottom, was impacted severely there. Our agriculture and timber industry, and it's not talked a lot about, Melissa, but that's a very important industries to our state. And so we're going to have to look at how we help those farmers and those timbermen to make sure that they're done. The infrastructure problem that was created as a result of that and many of the other disasters that has happened to our state in such a short period of time, we'll be spending some time on that. So, and then, of course, as I think someone said, the elephant in the room, and that is, how do we deal with the COVID-19, the effects of that, the decisions that were made, the emergency declaration? And I will tell you, look, you've already heard a common theme amongst our colleagues that's talked today, but you also heard maybe a little different twist on how they're going to look at that. And I think I'm like Nicholas on this, is that it gives us all the opportunity to be in a room and start discussing this in the way that it should be discussed. We've heard input from our community on how they feel things should go. We're going to take that input from our community, bring it back to Baton Rouge, and try to make sense of it and figure out what's the right direction to go. There's been many postulations. I don't know where we'll end on this session with that. Time will tell that. But I hope that we can get in the capital boundaries there and come to some decisions that are right for our business community, for our nursing homes, for our entertainment industries, for our schools, for our kids, for our adults and our seniors and all those. So I'm going to stop there, Melissa. I know you've got a lot of folks there that are wanting to ask questions. And I appreciate, again, you putting this together. And I look forward to getting to Baton Rouge and see if we can help out on some of those issues.
Thank you, Representative Wheat. Let's move on to some questions, if you don't mind. If you would simply send a message through chat if you have a question, we'd be glad to call on you at this time. Y'all did such a good job. Everyone's being quiet. I'm looking at this list, and I know that there's some people who are bound to have some good questions to ask. While we're waiting for questions, is there anything that maybe one of our five guests heard that would like to talk on again, maybe draw attention to anything in particular? I'll ask you to hold that thought. Think about that for a second. But Nick Gagliano has a question. Will federal funding be affected by any restriction rollbacks? Federal funding be affected by any restriction rollbacks? Would someone like to address that?
I'll take a shot at it first. This is Larry Freeman. On restriction rollbacks, no, I don't think there's any federal funding issues there. Where the federal funding question comes in is whether if we rescind the state emergency order. Now, I will tell you that there's been two congressmen, Congressman Graves and Congressman Higgins, have both said that federal funding would not be effective. We have reached out to Congressman Scalise's office, and he has not given us an answer. He doesn't know. His office doesn't know. My own personal opinion, the president has issued a declaration across the entire nation, across 50 states. I don't believe that whether a state implements an emergency declaration has any effect on the federal declaration. A federal declaration is going to trump the state declaration by federal law. So I have nothing I can cite to, other than Garrett Graves and Clay Higgins's comments, but I think they make sense when you look at it logically when there's a federal disaster across 50 states. And whether a state has its own disaster plan really shouldn't affect federal money coming to that state. That's just my opinion, and that's, again, based on the two congressmen.
Melissa, if I can maybe have a little input there as well, and this is Representative Wheat. And so I will tell you, on the Budget Committee, the question that you asked there, Nick, is very important to our state in the sense that if we bottle ourselves up to where any of those federal funds become unavailable as a result of anything we do, then obviously that puts us in a very difficult situation. Can y'all hear me, Nick? Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and so I think we have to be extremely cautious. And what I have found to be an interesting topic here is that I don't think the CARES Dollar Act that we've been using, that was the 1.8 billion and the way that we've used it and all, I really think we've got past the fact that some of that money is going to be in jeopardy, that we would have to pay it back. I think everybody has a pretty good comfort zone with that pot of money. I think the concern deals with some of the FEMA money that is out there and how those dollars, FEMA is a little bit different of a group to work with and the restrictions and their callbacks and how they fund things. And so I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered still yet concerning FEMA declarations and emergency declarations and how they pay back monies that are expected to come back into the local governments and the state itself. And so I know a lot of people have asked these questions. Before we do anything that would jeopardize that, we need to have a better answer than, "I don't think it's going to do that," or "my opinion is, I don't think it's going to do that." I think we need to have concrete decisions that are based on law, that we can make decisions that are not going to be detrimental to us in the future.
Right. Another question that we have is the current status of the petition to end the emergency declaration. Do any of you have any information on that current status of that petition?
Well, I'll take a stab at that one, too. And I think the answer we're all going to give is no. We don't know how many folks have signed it. At least I don't know how many folks have signed it at this point, or who has signed it. And I don't know the status. I do know and can say with a great degree of certainty that we do not have 53 signatures at this time.
Any other comments on that one? Let's move on to a comment that was mentioned by Representative Wheat, talking about our nursing homes. And many of you see this question here coming from our friend Amy Ebersabell. Do you see the visitation increasing soon? This week started one 15-minute visit outside per week. Thankful for that, but hope it moves to more. Any influence on this? Anything that you know about helping us get closer to visiting with our family and loved ones in nursing homes?
Melissa, I know I was at a meeting last week, and that was just before the shift was made to allowing the outdoor visitation. At that point, it was based on, the parish had to be less, 5% or less positivity, and there couldn't have been a positive case in the facility for the two weeks. But now I believe they shifted and are allowing the protocols for visitors to meet certain protocols and then can visit their loved one outside. I don't know what the next step's going to be on that. To me, it's incredibly important. You know, schools are back there. And my biggest complaint was staff members are coming and going every day and having their weekends and their time off and exposing to who knows what, but they're able to go in and be with the loved ones who can't see their family members. So that's basically all I know at this point. But I think the weight is being felt by those who make those decisions.
Hey, Melissa, and I could be wrong about this, but I want to say that just within the last two days, the governor's office has announced, I think I was on that call too, Beth, and we got, this is almost like kind of where the rubber meets the road, this topic when it comes to nursing homes and in particular, you know, the visitations because you're talking about the most susceptible population to COVID. I think 43% of the deaths have been within the nursing homes in Louisiana. It's the last stat that I saw. And then also, so wanting to protect those, but also the emotion and the passion that, you know, family members feel about going to visit their relatives, their grandmother, their great-grandmother, or their mom. And so this was, it was a very emotional call that we had. That was probably two weeks ago. And they were, they, some members of the governor's office and in particular, the folks that were making the call when it comes to how we handle the nursing homes. They were looking into a pilot program for this visitation. It was going to be outdoors. And I think the message was pretty clear that we need to, and it was a very limited pilot program. They hadn't announced the exact number of facilities that were going to be involved in the pilot program. But the call got to a point where I think the message was received that they need to go back to the drawing board on this one. And I'm pretty sure that just a few days ago, the governor had decided to follow what his team are referring to, the federal guidelines when it comes to the nursing homes. And that is, I believe, allowing for indoor visits in parishes that had a 10% infection rate or lower. Beth, is that, am I off-base on that?
I think you're right. I think they changed it from 5% to 10% because when it was at 5%, I think we only had like seven parishes that qualified. And I don't think any of ours. Yeah, I think that's important. So I believe they're going to keep shifting, just like you're saying. I believe they're going to keep shifting till they open it up more. Their demand is, we're in phase three. There should be something different happening than it was in phase one or two.
Yeah, so this is Representative Wheat again. And so on this issue, you know, with this COVID-19 that we've been impacted by, there was a couple of just things that you just, you know it's going to have a long-lasting effect on individuals. And so obviously, some of them relates to our kids and their schools and the thing that they're missing out on with their extracurricular activities. And that's one difficult area. The other one that would have been so impactful on the health of, not only the folks in the nursing home, but the families that have had to endure being away. I will tell you, one of my veterinarians that worked for me in my practice here, father-in-law just passed away. They're having his services today, in fact. And he was a resident of a nursing home. The family had the opportunity to visit with him 15 minutes about two days ago, and he was pretty much unresponsive at the time. And so they were cheated out of the opportunity from this virus. I'm not blaming it on anything except the virus itself. They were cheated out on the opportunity to have family time with an individual that they'll never get that back again. For me personally, my mom is in a rehab center. She will be going to a nursing home tomorrow. And so I felt firsthand the impact of what this has done to individuals in our community. And I've seen the grief that is done. And, you know, we have to figure And, you know, we have to figure out a way to make it happen with our nursing home. Then you're right, Beth, and you're right, Patrick. The, the governor did declare that, uh, the pilot program is no longer in effect and we will be following, excuse me, federal guidelines, and which is helping. Uh, that's going to help get some folks, uh, some visit time with their, their individual. You look at this issue from two different aspects. One obviously is the aspect of families getting in to, to visit. The other one is how do we protect those individuals that are in there that want to be protected from a disease that they could die from? It's complicated, folks. There's no easy answer to get out of this. And we just have to be smart about our decisions. So I think we're on the right track. It's moved way too slow, uh, but, um, but hopefully it's going to, it's going to be better in the coming future.
Thank you. Um, we do have one more question and we want to be very cautious of the time we have here. Um, uh, this comes from Jessica Shirey, one of our business owners. How will tax increases for businesses work if that is necessary? Maybe information on rates or length of time involved with that, if it is required?
Uh, this is Larry Freeman again. Uh, my focus and I, and my comments were on the Unemployment Trust Fund. Um, that's, that's one of the taxes or, or, or charges that both Representative Wheat and I agree that businesses shouldn't have to, to pay. And I think probably everyone on this call would, would agree to that. Um, it is a, it, currently businesses pay a certain surcharge, uh, to the trust fund. And when it gets below, I think it's $100 million, it increases up a, a, a certain percentage. And, and I don't understand the percentages. We got it explained to us the other day, but there is an increased percentage that each business would have to pay. And again, uh, I think we're in agreement that saddling businesses with that increased up charge to replenish that, uh, Unemployment Trust Fund is not something that I'm willing to agree to. And I think others have said the same. Um, again, I don't know where the money's going to come from, but I think Representative Wheat is correct. Uh, we'd like, and Representative Muscarella said the same, I believe. Looking to other avenues where there's some unspent money, such as the, uh, Main Street program or others, where we can move over into the trust fund would be a better way to do that than to saddle our businesses. Um, I will defer over to Representative Wheat on any other business taxes since he's on the, the proper committees to address that. So, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll shut up and let him answer.
Well, I, I, this is Key Muscarl. I can just say, Jessica, that, uh, the number that I'm getting, it's, it's going to be a 30% increase to that, that fee. So not a, just of the total amount that you pay, that, the talk is a 30% increase. That's not, I'm for that, that's the number that I'm getting. So I hope that helps answer you.
Yeah, so I, am I unmuted now? I'm, I'm having trouble back and forth here. Can you hear me?
Back to Wheat, you're good.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, thank you, Larry. And, you know, when we were debating the Main Street program on the floor of the House on how much money we were going to put in that fund, I had an amendment to the Main Street, uh, uh, bill at that time to set aside $100 million, uh, money for the exact purpose of what we're talking about right now. I came up a little bit short on getting the votes to be able to do that. But I think looking back on it, if folks knew where we were today, that would have been a wise vote to set that money aside to where we could have already easily transitioned $100 million over into the Employment Security Trust Fund to start showing that up. So if there's money left over in that, in that fund, we've had an attempt to do it already on the House floor. We need to build on that and get that money in the proper place where it should be. And that will be the start of alleviating any more, uh, burden on our businesses.
Thank you. Any more comments on that question from our guests?
If I could just add that, uh, in a, in a conversation about that just the other day here, um, uh, it came up that federal funding is at 0% interest for that. So that's, you know, there, there's a lot of hands out, you know, and I, you know, I, when I've spoken to, with Treasurer Schroder, his, uh, he's been, um, kind of taken aback that one out of three businesses that are applying for Main Street Recovery aren't paying taxes. You know, they, they don't proceed with their application for Main Street Recovery because they have no tax return. So that, there's a, there's going to be a lot of moving parts on this Main Street Recovery money and, and what we've learned from that, just like Representative Wheat said, you know, if we could reel it back, I think we would have personally. I would love to see that since it was CARES Act money being invested in expansion of broadband in some way. Uh, we're the only, uh, state in the South or in most of the country that has not put any state funding into expansion of broadband. So that, that's, uh, that's, there's, there's going to be a lot of conversations, but it's going to be, uh, amped up by the idea that federal funding is at 0% interest right now. So that's, uh, that's, it's going to make it interesting, Representative Wheat.
Thank you for the challenge, Beth.
Yeah.
I hope I didn't miss that this part was answered, but, uh, Jessica did add on. Um, and that just lasts until the coffer is filled to the minimum threshold. Is that an additional add-on, Jessica, to the correspondence or was that question answered? Jessica, if you'd like to turn your mic on, you're welcome to.
Well, I, I know that there, you had said that, hi, I'm Jessica Shirey. Um, the, I'm also the small business chair for the chamber, uh, so that I do have some questions. Um, uh, not only do I own my own business, but, uh, in looking out for our other businesses. Um, you had said that whenever that gets to a certain level, then the money has to come from somewhere. What, when it gets to, but whenever you get the money, if it were through taxes and you get back up to that level, then that stops. Cause I, I know that a lot of times whenever taxes get increased in any form, they tend to not get decreased, um, for one reason or another, so.
Yeah, so the, it's a fluid, uh, it's a fluid account. As money comes in from the state businesses at the current rate at which we're at, they be, they will be deposited into that trust fund. And then monies will then come out of the trust fund to pay the obligated workers' compensation that are, are workers' employment security that they're, they're due. And so at some point in that balance, uh, you will meet a threshold that they will drop below and then you have to start borrowing money to get it solvent to where it can pay the, the thing. So it is dependent a lot upon how much money is coming in and being deposited. There's a timing of that, how much money you're going to have to borrow. And then as Beth said, for a period of time, it is zero interest. How long that's going to be at zero interest? We don't know that at this point. Hopefully it's, uh, for a long time. But, but yeah, it is a, it's a, it's a give and take on the balance as it comes in from the businesses. That is correct.
And Jessica, just to add to the bill, the legislation, we don't know what it's going to come out. I mean, if, if a Republican legislator does it, it might read a little different than if a Democrat does it. Uh, so normally, um, you, you know, the legislation will dictate when the cap, when that money runs and when it stops. So, I mean, I wouldn't be for any reason of that, but I would think the only chance it would have to pass would be if it had some kind of time limitation on it. So I hope that answers your question.
All right, does that help? Good, yes. All right, well, I wanted to mention, um, since we're finished with our questions, our friends, um, at Mayor Zappi's office in Pontcharloula, they are going to have State Treasurer John Schroder, uh, there on Tuesday, October 6th at 11:30 a.m. This is something that Doc, Dr. Wheat, Representative Wheat and Mayor Zappi are working on together. Uh, they're going to be at the Pontcharloula Community Center. And I know all of us are talking to every business that we know of. But again, if, if you know someone who needs to get over there and talk to him in person, make sure you do call Pontcharloula City Hall and get them RSVP'd for that. We would like to thank Senator McMath, Senator Mizell, Representative Freeman, Representative Muscarella and Representative Wheat for, for being with us today and being just so, so open and candid. Um, on behalf of the Greater Hammond Chamber, thank you for your leadership. Um, we hope and we, of course, expect and challenge you to do everything you can to make sure the businesses in Tangier Parish, um, are able to, are able to get through this. We, we thank you for that. And, and please know that we stand ready to help gather any information that you may need from Tangier Parish business leaders. Or if you need to reach our leaders, we can again, provide that platform for you. So again, thank you so much for being with us today. Good luck in the special session. Thank you.